Weather permitting.
Oh, good one.
Yeah. And then Ryan.
What part of the floor does she go to?
Uh, outside.
It is, it's weird though, because Kyle has to start so much earlier.
He started.
I mean, so much, it's a month. And I remember. This is our first meeting this time. Like, your first meeting, you're taking around most of the dirt, you're flying. It's like, let's go take a.
Um, yeah. Well, no, um, it's not really a loaded question, but it really, it would really flow to, we refer everything to the department. We, why we have. We would help with. But everything as far as what, when and how would flow to the Department of Health and our local.
I see. She doesn't like the market.
Yeah. There's a little.
Does she ever, she, she ever be agents too?
Sure.
Which is. But if it's. She likes the school, she likes the team. She likes all that, then everything else will be.
The, uh, we were the meeting. Yeah, so we did have.
I need to meet the Star Wars guy. He's in the five, the five of us.
Yeah.
Familiar.
Yeah, hatred, that's. To find back. He is the solicitor.
I spent two and a half hours last night.
Oh, um, I don't have the list. I don't have the number here.
I'm not sure.
Okay. Yeah, so that's.
Oh, that makes sense.
I'm not sure who there.
Oh, yeah, so we, we all are as good as information as provided.
Oh, he thought. That's a whole thing. I am so.
I got it. You got it, buddy.
What showed up?
Morning. How are you?
Not too bad.
Good.
I want to thank you for something. I want to run it off of you for about ten years and one thirty. June Shawn. You own the property right across from the Catholic Church down there.
We'll talk to you then.
Huh?
We'll talk to you then.
Well, I'd just like to thank you for what you did to people. Ten years.
Any phone in? Good morning, everyone. Ask you to please rise for open prayer and budge leaders before we convene. Commissioner's Public Meeting.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the goodness, love, and your blessings that you bestow upon us. Lift our eyes to seek you first. We thank you for your mercy and grace. Father, we thank you for those who protect us. Sunday, we'll celebrate the Navy Reserve on their birthday. A hundred thousand reservists today have served in every major war the U.S. has been engaged. Formed in nineteen fifteen in response to World War One. They comprised of eighty-four percent of the Navy during the war. And we thank them on this special day for their service. Lord, thank you for these lives that have sincerely served. And we'll also honor the Navy C.B., whose birthday is on Tuesday. Originated in World War Two, they have been instrumental in combat operations, humanitarian efforts, and nation building. And we thank them for their dedication and service. And we ask you to bless these men and women that keep our freedoms by protecting our seas. As we conduct our meeting this morning, may you grant us the wisdom and clarity, make our decisions be in accordance with your will. These things we humbly ask in your name. Amen.
Budge leaders. Here's a word about the which is standing. My nation, under God, invincible, with the religion of justice.
Okay, we convene our Commissioner's Public Meeting at this time, and I believe we have an addition. Director?
Yeah, Commissioner seeking your approval to add the following salary board action to the agenda that was not previously posted. In Information Services' request to remove the following position from the TDA. Chief Information Officer, Director of Consolidated Services effective March third, twenty twenty.
Hey, I have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Okay, ask for approval of the Minister's previous meeting.
Question. Before we do that approval. On section two point O. Where it says reports.
Could you hang on one second?
Oh.
When we get the public comment on a agenda like this, I'll take your.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Part of.
All right, do I have approval of the Minister's previous meeting?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Yeah, all fair side?
Aye.
Okay, now Bill.
That's not the way we do that. Because once they're approved, you can't make, you can't make.
You're asking about the minutes?
Yes.
Oh, okay. All right, go ahead now, I'm sorry.
But that's fine, that's fine.
I thought you were talking about something else.
No, 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 that's fine.
Okay.
On section two point O, where it says reports. If you look at all the stuff, the justification through the state and the government, it says treasures report, not reports. There should be an open balance and a closed balance. Now, I understand that you're dealing with a lot of equities going through the whole system, different kinds of functions. Act thirteen money, grants, general funds, however it is put together. There should be a total number of what that pot's coming out of. And so the public knows where the county stands. And that's something that should be instituted on your minutes. Unfortunately, I've been extremely busy the past five months. And every time I look at that, I think to myself, what's the total pot? Where do we stand? Where do we look at? And get the total numbers in place. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
You brought up about the Naval Reserve being founded. I joined the Naval Reserve after I got out of high school, went in November of sixty-eight, and went to Vietnam from August sixty-nine to August seventy. And it was comprised of a naval reserve like Iowa. I was told I could join, join the Naval Reserves to get, I wouldn't get drafted, I wouldn't go to Vietnam.
John, thank.
And I can remember the old Naval Reserve stationed out on Sheridan Street.
Thank you for your service. Okay, public comment on agenda I am zoning. Okay, any other way online?
It's not coming up.
Not coming up, down.
Yeah, my phone or her page must be affected.
Okay, we're having problems there.
Yep.
Leslie, do you know of any issues?
Yeah, we're still having issues. Um, Matt, can you just email Mark the PC name and he'll get you fixed though?
Yeah, I even tried it.
Oh. What's the PC name?
Uh-uh, no, no, I can do that. I'm saying I tried pulling the.
Oh.
The video.
All right, we'll move on then to our report scanner. Morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Presented for your ratification are invoices due through March sixth, twenty twenty-four, to be paid on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, for one million, seven hundred ninety-five thousand, nine hundred thirty-six dollars and fifty-seven cents. The breakdown is as follows, with forty-six point fifteen percent being funded by the General Fund at eight hundred twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred thirty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents. Two point seven eight percent is being funded by ARPA grants at fifty thousand dollars. Four point five seven percent is being funded by Act thirteen grants at eighty-two thousand dollars. Eleven point three eight percent is being funded by other grants and pass-through monies at two hundred and four thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-four cents. Twenty-three point thirteen percent is being funded by RMS at four hundred fifteen thousand, three hundred fifty-four dollars and seventy-seven cents. And eleven point nine nine percent is being funded by escrow at two hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred ninety-five dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Okay. I have motion to accept the cash requirements report.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments for Caitlin? Green and all fair side?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Caitlin.
Hold on. You put my items, I touch.
More commissioners?
Morning.
So February is hard month, and I'm proud to announce that Lycoming County Department of Public Safety has partnered with the UPMC and Susquehanna Regional EMS to bring Pulse Point to our county. Lycoming County will be the fifteenth county in Pennsylvania to adopt Pulse Point, joining four thousand nine hundred ninety-two communities nationwide. This also covers Sullivan County due to the fact that Lycoming County nine oh one provides their dispatch services. Out of hospital cardiac arrest is a leading cause of death in the United States, accounting for an estimated four hundred and twenty-four thousand deaths each year, more than one thousand a day. The American Heart Association estimates that effective bystander CPR provided immediately after cardiac arrest can double or triple a person's chance of survival. However, less than half of cardiac arrest victims receive bystander CPR or the use of an AED. The Pulse Point Foundation is a five oh one C three nonprofit that developed an app to alert the public when a nearby cardiac arrest is happening and CPR is needed. The alert will also show any registered AED locations, so CPR can be initiated prior to arrival of professional responders who are being simultaneously dispatched by nine oh one. Participation is completely voluntary, and alerts are restricted to business and public locations. Additionally, for public awareness, Pulse Point provides a real-time display, both on the internet and mobile app, of all fire EMS calls occurring, which also aids to increase participation of the public. As users share the daily usefulness of Pulse Point with neighbors, family, and friends, they help build and sustain a dynamic and reliable network of CPR-trained individuals. We are, we are encouraging the public to download both the Pulse Point Respond and Pulse Point AED app, which are available for both iOS and Android. During the rollout, you'll see not only our staff, but also EMS and fire department units registering AEDs in businesses and public areas, which will create a countywide AED registry and database, which will also be a first for us. We're very thankful that UPMC has partnered with the county to fund sixty thousand dollars for setup and five years of service to provide this valuable resource to our residents and visitors. In the upcoming months, you'll also see more marketing materials. You can learn more at pulsepoint.org or contact our office for more details. Um, I provided some handouts in the back of the room there, which is some brief information, as well as our info boards here. Um, and I believe Tony Bixby, Chief of Susquehanna Regional EMS, would like to say a few words on behalf of UPMC.
Absolutely.
Morning, Tony.
Morning. Morning, and thank you for having us. Um, just on behalf of UPMC and Susquehanna Regional EMS, we just want to thank the county for having the opportunity to partner together in such an amazing initiative. We're, we're excited. We know that this is going to enhance our first responder, uh, response in the communities by basically enabling the general public to become some of our first responders, especially as we get out into some of our more rural areas where response times can be, you know, be pretty lengthy. This fits perfectly with our mission and our visions at UPMC and Susquehanna Regional EMS, and is great timing with our Minutes Matter, uh, training program, where we focus on four specific areas, one of them being sudden cardiac arrest and the use of AEDs. Along with that, we've worked with the Susquehanna Foundation in cooperation with First Quality to secure a significant amount of money to purchase a hundred AEDs that will be given free to different areas throughout Lycoming and Clinton Counties. Uh, we're looking at strategically where the, the, the best places are to put those, and one of the requirements when accepting one of these AEDs is that they will be, all be registered within Pulse Point and the app, so that everyone in the general public knows where these devices are and can respond in a timely manner. Um, in addition to those, they'll also have a stop the bleed kit and Narcan, uh, as well. So, um, again, we just want to thank the county for partnering us, thank you, you know, Hutch and your team, and, uh, we're excited and we can't wait to celebrate the, uh, the first life that's saved from this initiative.
Thank you for bringing this to us.
Thank you, John.
Okay, at this time, we'll recess the Commissioner's Public Meeting for the salary board, and we'll convene the salary board this time. Director?
Salary Board. Uh, seeking your approval of the salary board limits of the previous meeting, February twenty-second, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Salary Board seeking your approval on the following salary board actions as outlined in attachment A.
A.
Did I say A?
No, you just said attachment.
Attachment A. All right, um, in Information Services' request to reclassify the following positions. Deputy Chief Information Officer, pay grade twelve to IT Technology Director, pay grade thirteen, effective three March, twenty twenty-four. Consolidated Services Manager, pay grade eleven to IT Operations Director, pay grade twelve, effective three March, twenty twenty-four. And also in Information Services' request to remove the following position from the TDA. Chief Information Officer slash Director of Consolidated Services, effective three March, twenty twenty-four. In Human Resources' request to requal, reclassify the following position. Uh, Recruitment Specialist, pay grade six to Senior Recruitment Specialist, pay grade seven, retro effective one, correction, twenty-one January, twenty twenty-four. In Purchasing, request to reclassify the following position. Chief Procurement Officer, pay grade twelve to Director of Financial Management, pay grade thirteen, effective three March, twenty twenty-four. And Administrative Specialist, pay grade six to Financial Support Specialist, pay grade seven, effective three March, twenty twenty-four. In Budget and Finance, um, request to remove the following position from the TDA. Administrative Specialist, effective three March, twenty twenty-four. Financial Ma, in Financial Management, request to transfer the following positions from Budget and Finance, effective three March, twenty twenty-four. Director of Budget and Finance, uh, and Financial Analyst. And again, in Financial Manag, request to declass, to reclassify the following position. Director of Budget and Finance, pay grade thirteen, to Chief Budget Officer, pay grade twelve, effective three March, twenty twenty-four. And Information Services' request to remove the following position from the TDA. Chief Information Officer, Director of Consolidated Services, effective three March, twenty twenty-four. I think we had that.
Sorry, yeah, that was an error on my part, sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve all of them.
Okay, I have a second.
I'll second.
Questions or comments? So basically, what we're doing is looking at two different departments. Uh, with Budget and Finance previously, we are now combining Purchasing Department and the Budget Finance Department, combining them together. At one time, they were together, and we're putting them back together, and, uh, we're renaming the office, rebranding it, the Office of Financial Management. We're eliminating a position out of that office, and at the same time, over at the IT Department, uh, we have the, uh, one deputy going to the Technology Director, the other deputy going to the Operations Direct, Operations Director, and the Director of the IT Services is being eliminated. So we're taking two, two positions off the TDA, which will save approximately a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, and, and, and that'd be our savings from it, at the minimum. Also, by taking positions off the TDA, um, it, it, uh, it affects our workman's comp, it affects our insurances, it affects our retirement, because when they come in, they give us estimates on the entire TDA, and by eliminating positions, then we get more of an accurate figure. So, uh, this is a cost savings to the taxpayers, it's consolidating departments, it's making them, um, a little bit more efficient. At the same time, uh, we're saving, we figure at least a hundred and thirty-five dollars at the minimum.
Hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Hundred and thirty-five.
Oh, hundred and thirty-five. Hundred and thirty-five thousand at the minimum. And, uh.
He was trying to keep the rest.
Also want to thank, uh.
Tina.
Kane up at, he's our recruitment officer up in IT, or up in the HR office, he helped do the figures.
Yep.
So we knew where our savings were. So we want to thank him. Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Any other questions or comments?
No, I would echo what you said. I think it's, it's a great move, and it's consolidation, and most importantly, a cost savings to the taxpayers.
Okay, all fair side?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And at this time, we will, uh, recess the salary board and we convene the Commissioner's Public Meeting.
Okay, move on to personnel actions. Commissioner seeking your approval, uh, of the following personnel actions as conditional offers of employment subject to successful completion of a background check and all other conditions as outlined in attachment fee. In the Controller's Office, Kane Angel, Internal Auditor Full-Time Replacement, thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars per year, seventy-five hours per pay period, anticipated transfer date, March three, twenty twenty-four. In Financial Management, uh, my attuned Director of Financial Management, full-time, ninety-one thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and one cent per year, seventy-five hours per pay period, anticipated transfer date, March three, twenty twenty-four. In Financial Management, Eric Anderson, Chief Budget Officer, full-time, eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty per year, seventy-five hours per pay period, anticipated transfer date, March three, twenty twenty-four. In Human Resources, Michael Hagan, Senior Human Resources Business Partner, eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty per year, seventy-five, uh, seventy-five hours per pay period, anticipated start date, March eleventh, twenty twenty-four. In Human Resources, Gina Champion, Human Resources Business Partner, seventy-two thousand, eight hundred per year, seventy-five hours per pay period, anticipated start date, March twenty-five, twenty twenty-four. In Information Services, Mark Julio, uh, IT Technology Director, full-time, eighty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty per year, seventy-five hours per pay period, anticipated transfer date, March three, twenty twenty-four. In Information Services, Leslie, Leslie Kilpatrick, IT Operations Director, full-time, eighty-six thousand, twenty-three dollars and five cents per year, seventy-five hours per pay period, anticipated transfer date, March three, twenty twenty-four. In Pre-Release, Robert Harvey, Resident Supervisor, full-time replacement, eighteen sixty-four per hour, eighty hours per pay period, anticipated transfer date, March seventeen, twenty twenty-four. In the prison, Joshua Flexer, Correctional Officer Two, full-time replacement, twenty-one forty-eight per hour, eighty hours per pay period, anticipated transfer date, March seventeen, twenty twenty-four. In the prison, Damian Dome, Correctional Officer, Correctional Officer One, full-time replacement, twenty dollars per hour, eighty hours per pay period, anticipated start date, March eighteen, twenty twenty-four. In the prison, Joseph Brock, Correctional Officer One, full-time replacement, twenty dollars per hour, eighty hours per pay period, anticipated start date, March eighteen, twenty twenty-four. In the Sheriff's Office, Ryan McLean, Deputy Sheriff, full-time replacement, twenty-one sixty-three per hour, eighty hours per pay period, anticipated start date, March eleven, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Any questions or comments on personnel actions?
It is Maya to the person. We should check her background. She's sitting right there. She came back.
Um, I, I would make a comment. I think that it's, it's great to see there's, there's two, uh, one, one I would consider a promotion to Maya, and we appreciate the work that she's done for the county for many years, I think.
Uh, I'll be twenty in September.
Yeah, so, you know, it's, to me, being a new person sitting here, it's nice to see that, you know, we promoted that position from within. Uh, we have a, a move to the Controller's Office. I also feel that's promotion. Kane's done a phenomenal job for us in the HR department. Uh, but, you know, here he is, he's, he's got the ability to better himself, um, and I think that that's shows a value too, as for the employees that, uh, give their time to the county, that, uh, there's, there's room for advancement, there's room for change, and we appreciate that. And I think we've created a very exciting new, uh, management team in our, in our Human Resource Department that, that hopefully leads us in a different direction as well.
Yeah, but I also want to thank Leslie and Mark, Leslie's in the audience, and, and, uh, Leslie's been a longtime employee, and, and, um, what they've done with IT has been tremendous. I, I made note before that recently, we got a thank you from the entire staff. Everyone over there just, um, sent us a thank you, saying that, that Mark and Leslie are, are leading the department really well, and, and they just wanted us to be aware of it. And, uh, so that, that was nice to see, so we want to thank them also, and, you know, and, uh, Kristy, you're getting a great employee in Kane, so, very detail-oriented and.
That's, we need an auditor.
Yeah. Good, so we're look, we're excited about these, uh, these positions. Okay. Motion, a second, all fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to six point one, TDA actions. Uh, Commissioner seeking your approval on the following TDA actions as outlined in attachment C. And that is, um, within Financial Management, request to rename the Purchasing Department. And I think maybe we need to make a correction to that. Because we are merging both the Office of, uh, Budget and Finance and the Purchasing Department into a new office, now the Office of Financial Management.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Good. All fair side?
Good.
Thanks. Mark?
Aye.
Okay.
I was ready.
Attention, attention. All right, moving on to action.
He waivers off every once in a while.
Seven point one, uh, Commissioner seeking your approval to appoint the following individual to the Lycoming County Planning Commission Board. Brian Shear, four-year term, uh, beginning one one, twenty twenty-four, through twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-seven.
Okay, a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. We want to thank Mr. Shear for stepping forward and serving on a very important planning commission. And all, and all the volunteers that stepped forward to volunteer on different various boards. It's a lot of time, a lot of energy, and we appreciate their dedication to the community.
Okay, move on to seven two. Commissioner seeking your approval, um, on the agreement with the Crime and Justice Institute, which is a division of Community Resources for Justice, Inc., um, in an amount not to exceed forty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-nine cents. The course will be paying for this out of the restitution funds from the probation office. And that account has approximately under sixty-five thousand dollars in it, and, um, the authorization is at the discretion of the President.
Okay, motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. Seven three, Maya.
Good morning, Commissioner.
What's going on?
Um, this is vote to approve a service agreement. It's with Just the Facts Credential Verification Incorporated. Um, this is a three-year agreement that we are entering into. This will assist HR with the onboarding and doing the necessary, uh, I guess you could call it consumer report. This will assist HR with the onboarding and doing the necessary, I guess you could call it, consumer report on the employees when they come on board.
Okay.
On a nas needed basis, and it gives us a much better depth of background services compared to what we're currently using.
Okay. Motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Thank you, Maya.
7.4, Leslie.
Good morning, Commissioners, good morning, Matt. Seeking your approval to renew our adult probation software. This is a 2024 budgeted item. We logged in for three years, the same place for all three years, which is good. So there's not going to be an increase for at least the next three years. Total amount is $10,340.
Okay. And it's a budgeted.
It is budgeted, yes, yep.
Motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Leslie, we want to thank you because you often deal with contracts and trying to get prices and negotiation. You do an excellent job.
No, thank you.
So we want to thank you for your service.
I like to beat the contract or something a little bit.
You do a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
7.5, Mark, agreement with Kleinfeld.
Morning, Mark.
Morning, Commissioners. My name is Mark Haas. I'm the development services supervisor for the planning department of Lycoming County, Pennsylvania. We are requesting a vote to approve a contract extension with Kleinfeld Engineering, formerly Century Engineering. This is a 2024 budgeted item. The engineering firm is our consulting engineer for all the subdivision and land development plans that we perform.
Okay. And a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
7.6, Austin, change order.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Austin.
Today I have for you a request to approve a change order with Kevin E. Rager Construction. This is for our bridge bundling program. It would be a deduct or a credit change order in the county's favor, which would reduce the contract amount from $1,987,262 to $1,974,89. This was sort of a reconciliation at the end. There was a $22,000 deduct that we got, but then there was two additional change orders that came up through the process that added contracts. So the ultimate reduction is $13,173.
Good, motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Just what was the, why do we get a $20,000?
So there was a contingent line item that they had put in initially. That was not needed, so we're not going to pay for something.
Okay, great. All fair side.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
7.7 and 7.8, Jenny.
Good morning, Commissioners. The first item is a vote to approve submission of a letter of intent for the Riverwalk Extension. It's for a $1 million grant for the Arc Power Grant, and that is the application Regional Commission's Partnership for Opportunity in Workforce and Economic Revitalization Program. So it's a letter of intent if we're invited to submit to be able to submit a full application in April.
Great, motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Thank you. The next item, 7.8, is to approve the submission of the Green Streets, Green Jobs, Green Towns Grant to the Chesapeake Bay Trust in the amount of approximately $85,000. It's for the Bishama Factory. We're serving as a pastor for the organization. They are looking to do a green garden in the Burton Lawn in Green Bruce, on that facility.
Good, good. Motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Your comment. Do you want to add anything?
No.
Go ahead. That's good. Give me that.
I don't, no, I don't think I do. I'm just happy to be here on February 29.
Yeah.
I mean, what are the odds?
And you're awake. Where were you four years ago?
Yeah. That's a good question.
Who would remember? The party's, you can't pardon to do that, it's just the day to day. Okay, any comments from general public? They ask you to please keep your comments brief into county issues. Thank you. Morning, John.
Good morning, Commissioners. I want to welcome the two new county commissioners and wish you the best of luck. We had the three M's before, but we got a different variation. We got Mark, Martin Metzger this time. Now isn't that coincidental?
Can you welcome me too?
I want to cover a few things. I'm in a position of living in, my name is John Sharn, I'm from Jersey Shore. I live in a unique position of being in Jersey Shore, being able to pay attention to what happens in Clinton County as well as in Clinton County. Right now, we have a law loss that in Lycoming County here, the wind sport gets delayed, that the city kicked in a million dollars for the developers. There is a law loss going up, going in up in Clinton County about a mile west of Sheets and Walmart. And they bought a restaurant that went out of business, and they submitted plans to the Lycoming Hall, to the commissioners up there, and it's going forward. But the unique part of it is, it's not being financed, it's all being financed privately. And the other thing I'd like to bring up about with development here with everything, it's kind of been overlooked that I, recently was turned down with everything that there was going to have to be $5 million in sewer, sewage, I guess sewage improvements to the Lycoming Mall. And the developer was willing to come up with a million five, and it was going to be done through the store authority, I think, to get the grants for the other three million. Don't quote me on the figures exactly. And the grants weren't picked up. So this brings up the question of if these sewer improvements don't take place, and the developers can't come up with the cash to come forward with it, does that basically play to ground zero? That's something that nobody can really answer. My third concern is, how are we progressing with the bids for updating the polling places in Lycoming County? Because this has been an ongoing issue, and every day it's delayed, right, it's a price of war.
You mean with the Department of Justice and the ADA?
Yeah.
Yeah. I know Forrest has been working diligently on it, and we're in compliance with everything in.
Yeah, we've broken it down into essentially two groups, and so we went after the first priority groups. Those bids have been submitted. We are working memorandums of understanding or agreement with each of the facilities to.
What are the bids running right now? Can you disclose that? Like a high or something like that, a general figure?
I wouldn't say high, because, I mean, obviously, each location has a specific, different kind of change. So, I mean, in some instances, we get to be talking $800 to a couple thousand dollars.
No, Forrest, yeah?
No.
Mr. Sortman, you made some very interesting comments. Your first meeting today, here, that you thought the county had overstepped its bounds in some respects, and you would, I'll put it this way, like to see a rollback. It would be interesting if you could, and maybe not today, but explain what your, where the county, you think, went over their bounds and what the rollbacks are to either the three media outlets, Sungiz App, working with Web Weekly, or, I'm not giving your business a plug, but NorthernCentralPA.com.
He won't talk to me.
No.
You know, I will say publicly that I think the comment of rollback was I wasn't going to change anything that previous commissioners had moved forward with, but would look at getting some finalization dates and getting us out of areas where I think that we have more.
It would be nice to hear a detailed account of how you feel. And to bring up, and this is not trying to cast doubts on anybody, but with the Lycoming County Commissioners versus Krista Rogers, county controller for the last two years, that door is partially closed, but it is not because there's been a, because with it over the last few years, there has been many law firms and lawyers involved in this to pay the bills. And I have a right to go request in my pocket right now. I will give you.
Thank you, Mr. McDermott.
Requesting a, the legal firms that were involved, plus the lawyers, and what the cost was to the county. Because this is only about one of, what, about five or six lawsuits, county and the election, that everything, you know, that were involved in. And this is not against anybody. I know you are not in favor of taking care of it or going forward with it when the negative decision come through, and you had to get. And there's one other thing that affects the community here with everything. There was an article in the Web Weekly a couple weeks ago by the reporter sitting back there about the election and the court system in the United States with it, and about election fraud. I would like to point out to the editor, to the reporter, that when really Giuliani come to town, what was it, 19, 2020, petitioning the courts, federal court here locally, with some issues about election fraud and that, that basically, the local federal judge at that time handed down a 28-page opinion, basically, and I'll put it bluntly, ripping Giuliani and the lawyers there a new butthole because there was no, they presented no proof. And of the cases presented throughout the United States, there was no proof given. And I would suggest that maybe you take a look at that article instead of printing falsities. Thank you.
Thank you, John, thank you. Any other comments on that?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Great to, I hope you do well.
Thank you.
Scott, you're back again. I hope you do well.
John, if you stay for an extra minute, I want to talk to others.
Okay.
We'll be done in about five minutes.
And Mark.
I have a phone call.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was.
Excuse me, we have a solicitor at the table right now. My presentation is going to be a little awkward because two things happened, Commissioners. First thing is, now we have a situation where that non-taxable, okay, nonprofit, la di la di la di, it goes on through the whole state. Lycoming County unfortunately is being tore apart by two colleges to get whatever they want, nonprofit. They buy land, nonprofit. We have certain entities that are buying properties, knocking down the building, paying only taxes on the bare land. Nothing's going up. But, with that being said, we have one of the largest employers in the county. Now, this morning, they're sort of backing away from something because it got in their ear about donations. With this being said, keep this in mind now. I'm not putting any punishment on nobody here. This county is not what you call young, a young population. The older people in this county can't afford too much more in taxes. As was brought up before January. They talked about a new thing going on through the county, they reappraised all the houses. Now, understand something here. That's nice that it was said that way, but taking this into consideration, we've got older people in this county, and there's a lot of them, who came and said to me, how do I get help to put a roof on my house? I can't afford it. Not a good deal. So in respect to that, because the county does not have a building firm to work with, they put it on another nonprofit in order to do that. Well, they have no, they have no way to do roofing. Is there some way that the county, because we had this American Rescue Workers Fund money, I know it's probably all used up by now, why wouldn't there some put in escrow they could have drew out of to help these people out with new roofing?
Bill, we have programs through step, the Homes in Needs Program. There are those type of programs to help those individuals.
They don't put roofs on. And that's another problem. And then, it's not something that we might frown upon. I'm just asking, maybe there's a way to get some help for these people. Some of these people, they're in their 80s and 90s, and the government says, quote unquote, we want to keep these people in their homes. Okay? But this deal about all the money coming out for grants and stuff like that, it's nice. The reason I brought about this Article Two, about the funding, there's a reason for this. The reasoning is, number one, the county should set a precedence. How they do a treasurer's report, they have documentation put on paper. Most of your boroughs, townships, and how you want to word it, they do not have it done properly.
And how?
There's a statute of laws in the county, excuse me, in the government, that specifically spells out how things are supposed to be done. I mean, we're just the common public coming here in these meetings and saying to you what we believe is right, but someone has to set a precedence. May it be, it's like ADA, prime example. We build new buildings, we don't do ADA properly. Take you down the Golden Strip and take you anywhere and show you new buildings, ADA is not being followed. The county has to do it because the federal government says we have to do it. For all the polling places. If someone falls in one of these new buildings, I don't care if it's a township building, where this building's at, or wherever, it could be sued, and it won't be pretty. They should have stepped forward and put all this stuff in place before it was opened, not after the fact. We've already had some incidents where people have felt that they decided not to do anything, and I thank them for not suing anybody because it's not, it's not the way to go. They should have took care of the problem before it happened. But I hope we understand, I hope we have an understanding on that. I hope we change this number, this Point 02 to treasurer's report and have it documented properly, that we follow through with this. It's one of them things that people don't come to meetings because they don't hear, their voices won't be heard. No one's here to rewrite the books on anything, just to follow protocol. Listen, I want to thank you guys so much. I wish you the best of luck with everything.
Thank you, Bill.
And good luck to you, and I appreciate this, and don't forget about the nonprofit.
Take care. Thank you. Okay, next. Are you stretching or?
No, I wanted to speak to that, if that's okay with you, because it's about pressures of work.
Okay.
I'll be very sure.
Okay, go ahead, and then we'll have.
This will be, hopefully, just two minutes, but.
I just, Larry Stout, I'm from Montgomery. I'm on the board of the library and also the Historical Society. And we have been working very hard to try and, because of your initiative as well, thank you for improving that area and what's going on, Route 15, et cetera, to try and help revitalize that area. And so we have some initiatives that we're going at, but the library is over 100 years old now, and it's kind of the center of the city, or the town. And we really wanted to, it needs some help, it needs some work, and I didn't know where to begin. And so I thought, well, why don't I just ask Maya? You know, she knows where all the money is, so. And all I wanted, really, all I wanted was just, you know, some, where to start. She went, looked up, found several different things that we could qualify for, made an appointment. We sat down, she went through it with me and got us off the ground. And I just want to acknowledge that she doesn't just, you know, she cares about the community. She does her job, not just as a job, but she does it because she's a committed person, and she's a graduate of Indiana University of Pennsylvania, which I also just happen to be a joke graduate of. So that also kind of explains a lot. But honestly, whatever you're giving to her, she deserves all of it and more because I think she's one of those, kind of like a George Washington, you know, indispensable person. She really is, she's amazing. So thank you, Maya.
Thank you.
Thank you for recognizing all that she does.
I just promoted her. I don't know what.
I think because she screwed up the agenda. She's trying to cover for her. She's trying to cover for her.
That was, that was added late because someone forgot.
I was totally making.
I just cut and paste on that.
My bad.
Larry, I also want to recognize Indiana, Pennsylvania is the hometown of Jimmy Stewart. Okay. Krista?
Yes.
And then we'll take Tom.
I just thought I should address it publicly so that it is on record as to what he was talking about as far as a treasurer's report. What we are publishing is not anywhere near what a treasurer's report is, nor is it required of the county to do that on a weekly basis.
Monthly.
But no, we can, we're not even required, because, it's not even possible, honestly, for, at this size. We do our annual financial reports to show where the money's coming in, where it's going out.
The reason I said that to you.
Well, can I just finish here, and then you and I can talk further?
Sure.
But what we are publishing is what we, bills we are paying on a weekly basis to get their public approval. Now, if you would prefer the form that Kalen does that she reads from, that could always be added as an attachment to the agenda if you want those details to be attached fully. So that is an option, but we can talk further.
I think it's important to note, too, that even what we do with the cash requirements report is not legally required. We go above and beyond to put that out.
Well, and it's just the best way to document it because we do need at least two Commissioners approving it, the Controller and the Treasurer, which is happening with the cash requirements report. But you are correct, it wouldn't have to be on the agenda, but this started one board ago or two boards ago, that they agreed to put it on the agenda to put the transparency out there as to what we're paying out weekly.
That's correct.
That's all.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes.
Morning, Tom Adams from Wayne's Court. Proverbs eleven, nine says, "With his mouth, Godless man destroys his neighbor; but through knowledge righteous will be delivered." Since last day of Black History Month, I don't know how many people know James Armistead. He was in the Revolutionary War. He was a slave to William Armistead, and he served in the war with Washington. Well, James, a slave, he did some arms deals for Washington. But James got involved with the war because he saw what was going on in Richmond. A certain general who was in charge of the destruction of Richmond happened to be Benedict Arnold. And he turned his troops on the civilian population, and that really bothered James, so he decided to get involved with the war. And so Washington had the Marquis de Lafayette. He was tasked to track the British troop movements. So he decided he needed a spy ring. He had to get some people in the spies, do some spy work for him. So he, what he did, he piggybacked off that the British told a lot of the slaves in America, they put out this notices around that if you come help us, join us, we'll grant your freedom and, you know, we'll take care of you. Well, sign, you know, eighty, over eighty thousand of them did that, but less than five thousand granted the freedom after the war. You know, they're just, that's how the British were. But anyway, James got involved, and he happened to get in with Benedict Arnold. And when he saw, he was serving him his meals, and when Cornwallis saw him, he said, hey, this guy's, you know, a great servant. Why is he serving Arnold? He can serve me, so he became servant for him. But in the meantime, he was sending back information to British troop movements, and the British were getting beat in a lot of smaller battles. And he couldn't figure out what's going on. You know, eventually, as time goes on, he got, it could, was it Cornwallis calls him in, and he says to James, he says, you know, James, we have a real problem here. There's a spy in our, in our group. We got to try and figure out who it is, because he's probably sweating bullets. He's hearing this, he's probably thinking, oh, I'm done. But they're thinking it's maybe it's one of the officers, they can't figure it out. And he says, would you be a spy for us? He's America's first double agent. And at the time, people didn't like spies because they said you can't trust them, you know, because of lie and stuff. But he became one of America's greatest heroes, and that was, you know, taught to our kids throughout, you know, American history until Woodrow Wilson, once again, whitewashed American history. But he also took on the name of Lafayette after the war. They had a big parade when Lafayette came back through the country to, you know, to revisit. And he saw James in the crowd, and people didn't really know who he was. He pulled him up on his chariot, on his carriage or chariot, and they, you know, became great buddies who took on his last name. Because James, after he finally got his freedom, and then he became neighbor to his slave master, Armistead. Was his first name was William, yeah. And, but he had some of his own slaves, and that was common in the era, too, that, you know, there were even black people that held slaves. But most people, a lot of times, they even mistreat their people. But it was kind of ironic, but he did take on the name of Lafayette, and that's how he's known, you know, through history, too. That's pretty interesting. I did want to say something about the EMS and these units, and it's a great idea. When I worked down in a pen code, it was a steel fabrication plant. I was on their emergency first responder team. We were trained to do, you know, just everything, almost at EMT level. But I'll tell you, that's a nerve-wracking position to be in. And the more, of course, it's some, the more you do it, the more easy it should become with it, that's a lot of pressure, you know, these people that do this stuff, and the first responders, police, because you always, you want to do the best job, and you don't want to make a mistake, and you know you're being watched. You're going to be scrutinized no matter what. My heart goes out to John being told he wasn't going to go to Vietnam, and he winds up serving. You know, we thank you for that.
Well, it pays out in the long run because I had my eyes just done, and that was about twenty thousand dollars to be able to. So the Lord works in His own ways.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Any other over comment? Any from online?
I was just going to mention, when you mentioned, what'd you say his name was? Armistead?
Armistead, yeah.
It reminded me of the movie Amistad, which was the ship, the slave ship. But for the end of Black History Month, if you've never seen that, about the overthrow of a slave ship and the legal proceedings that they went through to try to figure out what to do with these people and where they belonged. And it was, it was heartbreaking and uplifting, and I think it was Spielberg. I think it was a Spielberg movie. McConaughey, Matthew McConaughey played the attorney. I think it was a Steven Spielberg movie, but if you've never seen it, it's fascinating.
Anybody from online?
For the password.
Two online from J.D. Digger. How do the Commissioners vote and approve things that aren't posted for public review? Previous comment is in regards to minutes from twenty-twenty-three, not twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you. All right, we completed our agenda, so our next meeting will be on March the seventh, twenty-twenty-four, right here in this room. Thank you.